Why don't we go ahead and get started then? Wyatt?
Thank you Mayor Baruch, members of council, member of planning commission and staff. We do have a PowerPoint for the CIP. And we're going to assume that the council has read that over the weekend, and so we're not going to labor through every slide in detail, but we want to try to emphasize some of the key points in the CIP. And this year, for the first time in several years, we actually have a joint recommendation from the planning commission and the city manager. In recent years, we've had some differences on a couple of key points, or minor points generally, but this year, I think it is a planning commission, city manager, joint recommendation to the city council. We look forward to your comments and feedback and direction on it. Cindy?
Good evening, council, planning commission. I also want to acknowledge we have the superintendent, Dr. Jones, with us. Most of the school board was unavailable, so this is why it's not a tripartite joint session, and we will be formally doing the CIP on April 12th, when the school board joins you for their, the joint session. Going to cover this evening, real quickly, policy compliance and walk through, walk past the finance slides, the same ones you saw predominantly in the city manager's budget presentation and the Mr. La Conde's update. So we'll jump to slide seven momentarily. As Mr. Shields said, we'll talk a lot about projects, and then with questions, discussions, and next steps. Just as a refresher, this whole CIP by charter is consistent with policy, and that's part of what the planning commission has to opine on, as well as the financial sustainability. You'll note new this year is the watershed management plan, because it's been adopted, and the proposed PED plan is in process of public input. So, all of these you have seen, they're in your slides. It provides the financial context. I kept it here, so when it's on the website and for the public, it's in context. So with that, we're going to jump into projects overview, planning to do it in this order. That's the way the slides are currently set up for you. As a reminder, this is the PI for the five-year CIP. So this is all the projects that are in the proposed CIP, broken out by functional categories. So general government facilities and schools, 27% over the five-year period each. Stormwater and transportation, 20% over the five-year piece. And then you have Rexon Park, 3%, IT for two, public safety, which is a fire station, for the 1%. This breaks that out in the dollar amount. FY13 is 15.6 million. The full five-year CIP is 50 million. And in the financials, as we went through it, the facilities is the predominant part with stormwater for debt. This facilities is joint general government and schools. For the IT, there's fiscal year 13 and 14 projects. The first year is 550,000, and it is predominantly 500,000 is for the replacement of our police dispatch phones, which are very outdated. We have no more cars to actually replace the circuits, and when you pick up the phones, they fall apart. So it's very critical for our public safety, obviously, to have a functioning dispatch system. And right now, when Fairfax or Arlington interfaces with us, any data that Arlington picks up doesn't transfer in our CAD system, so our police officers have to re-get the address and re-get the description of the case, which is amazing that they still respond as quickly as they do, but it's not appropriate. The second piece of that is the library, and this is to connect our failing, correct our failing fiber and phone connection between the library and city hall. The conduit is failing from the 1984 renovations. The 14 CIP is another 500,000. This is for the PBX phone system. All, four of the six servers are end of life. This is joint with the schools. One server is city, the rest are schools. And it also replaces the schools' handsets. Two years ago, the general government's handsets were replaced, but not the schools'. We also have built in some infrastructure connectivity and continuity of operations, sort of speak to Mrs. Berry's points about how our servers back up and how can we respond if one goes down. This will help the connections with our facilities. Public safety is the fire station, is for the windows and the trucks, the windows and the bay doors for the trucks, 250,000. Anything related to facility maintenance and vehicles are not in the CIP, and with the new accounting rules, vehicles are not in the CIP. They'd be in the operating budget, but given ongoing discussions with Arlington County, neither maintenance or trucks are budgeted. For city hall and public safety, this and stormwater is where we'll spend most of our time this evening, to make sure we have good grounded facts, and then have transportation in Rexon Park to end. For the city hall public safety improvements, as council will recall, in May of last year, you adopted the facilities task force. There were eight stakeholder representatives on that task force, which included council, which was Mr. Snyder and Mr. Pepe, which included planning commission, which is Mrs. Hockenberry and Ms. Teetz. And then we had sheriff and judge and police with Mary Gavin, and we had engineering with Bill Hicks, and we had schools. Dr. Jones came, and then Sevi Fadella, representing schools, attended all of them. And then for the employee advisory committee, we had Danae, who's with us this evening. Council requested the task force to review all the renovations and expansion plans. The city hall facility projects for the multiple years, the four components that we'll review this evening, have the endorsement of the task force, the endorsement of the employee advisory committee, and the endorsement of the planning commission in what's presented to you this evening. Ultimately, we've talked numerous times, but eventually, we need to achieve a long-term master facilities planning, so we're not doing this in five-year increments. And I know Dr. Jones has been doing a lot in her first year to reassess all the schools' facilities, and I think the city hall public safety moves us forward in a lot of what we need to do in this building for the next 20 years, and then the next place, of course, is in this CIP. There's a start for the library, and we need to make sure we're maintaining all of the 11 facilities on the general government side. For city hall public safety improvements, as we mentioned last year, when you adopted the FY12, critical health and safety information, it's been reconfigured, it's much smaller. It's just under 12 million now with the parking, and before, any ranges of programs ran from 16 million to 70, depending on the variations. What I'll highlight tonight is critical renovations, part two for FY13, the central entrance, rear expansion, and the campus parking lot improvement concept. In general facilities, there is also the library expansion. This was added by the planning commission for 2 million in FY14. And as a reminder, the library board of trustees did adopt and recommend to the city manager the 6.75 million, which has been their recommendation since FY09, although in the last two years, they agreed to 2 million for the potential for acquisition. One of the things, as we talked about, when the library director was here for the operating budget, and tied with the planning commission when we were talking about this, is the need to step back and update the facility study for the library, given the changing demographics, the type of in-person programming, technology, are we going eBooks, circulation books? And so it is proposed that we update that facility study over this next year. To highlight some of the points that were discussed with the task force and the planning commission, is what is this study, this project addressing? You've heard and seen them all before, in terms of safety, central entrance, ADA accommodations, OSHA, energy efficiency, helping citizens to get from one end of this building efficiently. And then it's a much more cost-effective approach at 12 million versus 16 to $70 million ranges. To kind of put that in perspective, from when Duberry was contracted in 2007 to do the feasibility study, the first recommendation of this is the ideal, which the city should consider for libraries, community centers, and city hall. City hall was identified to have 84,000 square foot shortfall for what court set, industry standards and office standards are for space. Council asked staff and the community to go back and revisit that. With the updated report that's in your full CIP notebook under tab six, the final report, Duberry is still showing a 30,000 square foot shortfall if you were to have the proper court set, jails, restroom, storage, elevator shafts, and office space for standard square footage sizes. Some of the things that we've done to address that in the plan that's before you is we've renovated first floor east wing, third floor west wing. We've moved the utility staff, a large portion of them off-site. This plan also proposes removing the rest of the water utilities staff off-site, whether it's rent or some other configuration. Obviously, court services is now in Gage House, so we don't need to accommodate them in this building. No separate police entrance, no change to the court set. The cells stay the same. We're undersized in terms of number and separation of adults and juveniles, and so the deputies maintain surveillance in person and on camera in exchange for that. So what's before you in the CIP is 7,500 square feet expansion to city hall. That would be 6,000, two floors rear space behind council this evening, connecting east and west wing, and 1,500 out front for a central entrance, and below that, a secured police area. Basically, you've got the G corridor and one space out to where the stairs are, sort of where the George Mason statue is, would be low grade secure, and above it, central entrance. And that's what it looks like, two floors in the back, one floor, two floors in the front. The central entrance would be a floor and a half because of our split level off-grade approach to city hall. And it would lay out a lot, improve a lot of those key issues that I mentioned earlier. And a large concept, in your report three, has all of this laid out in diagrams. We make the first floor east wing be the high-volume citizen traffic for court tickets, voting, commissioner revenue, DMV, treasurer. West wing first floor would be your high land development businesses. This whole area would become public safety. We'd move, what is the dog room for public meetings, up to the first floor west wing, and you'd have meeting, small meeting areas in the central front entrance. There would be no changes to elevator shafts, stairwells, restrooms, all of that would stay as currently is. With enhancements, like in this year's budget, you approved replacing the elevator so they don't break down, but no new elevator shafts. A change from what council saw last year, and I'll come back to the dollar amounts and the timing, is a new parking option than what council saw last year. Last year, there was in the CIP a redo of the rear parking garage to make it more grid-like. That impacted landscaping and trees, and didn't enhance the security and safety component. So what we have now is a proposal for out front, a structured parking deck with one grade below a public safety secured parking. It would be at the same level as the low-grade corridor that I described out there, so it'd be simple, one-level excavation and good police security in. And Mary Gavin is here that can answer questions and describe some of the benefits of that to highlight what I'm going to mention. She did it at the planning commission with the task force, so I was asked to have her here because of the specific components of it. But we wouldn't need to do the rear parking, which was 450,000, and we wouldn't need to do the secure parking fence behind us, which became very difficult to figure out how to maneuver police vehicles in and out. We still would increase 45 spaces. What we would gain is a secure entrance for police, sheriff, and courts, because they could come into that low-grade corridor. Personnel and weapons, wouldn't be transferring rifles and everything out here in the open. Weather protection, so in the winter, the police don't have to move their cars off-site to George Mason Garage, for example, and Mary can very articulately describe how the benefits for some training at other uses of that garage are. What this also does is reduce the negative impact of stormwater and trees for what we would have to do in the back to gain 45 space, which is consistent with what we ask developers to do when they're coming in to redevelop. We don't want more surface parking. We ask them to do structure or underground. And the design would allow us to increase the front footprint by about 10 feet, which gives more room for the vendors, for the farmer's market, for the pedestrian walkway, and also means we stop tearing up the grass with the truck ruts and so forth. So that's what staff is recommending, that's what the task force recommended, and that's what was adopted by the planning commission. I kept in here the other parking space, so you can see a comparison of the diagrams I'm going to show, but it's not what's recommended, because it doesn't gain the additional benefits that I just highlighted. So to give you a visual picture of the recommendation, this is Park Avenue, and that's the west wing. The flags would be right here. There is 11-foot grade separation between, decline from the flags to the intersection of Little Falls and Park, so you, we can work with the grade and do one grade below that would be all public safety, sheriff, police, and courts. Up top would be public parking for citizens for easy access into the central entrance and on Saturday's farmer's market. This is aerial of city hall, east wing, west wing. This would be the top surface of the parking deck. You would come in off of park to the upper level, and you could go around and out for out. And you could also come in and go below grade to the public safety secure. The other way out for public safety secure would be a new drive aisle here. This could be more enhanced for park or open space, which is designated, whether we'd have amphitheater or some seating, and you wouldn't have to destroy what currently has a lot of open green space handling, stormwater runoff, and code compliance. So if you could keep that in mind for what it looks like right now, the grid approach that you saw last year took out all of the squiggly roundabouts, as it were, and did a very traditional grid pattern, squared it off by the tennis courts, and back here by Gage House, and then also on Cherry Hill to pick up some parking spaces. Didn't change anything by the Cherry Hill going towards the farmhouse, and created parking here. This became very grid-like, and as we tried to do some concept of police secure fencing, which was proposed for back here, it worked, but it made it very challenging for the police vehicles to turn in and out, and it became a tighter drive aisle there. Both net about 45 spaces, but what you gain is a lot more public safety security, less impact on the environment, and improvements for Rexon Parks, farmer's market, and park utilization space. Now, last year, when city hall approved the CIP, when council approved the CIP for city hall and public safety, the rear expansion was put out to FY16 with the request for the facility task force to look at it and study it and make a recommendation back to you. So as I mentioned, this, this before you and in the CIP has been adopted by the task force and the planning commission, and it basically realigned some of the projects for economy of scale and logical flow. We're currently, Mr. Hicks and I are working on the 1 million for sprinklers, elevators, and roof, and today you'll see the scaffolding going up to fix the roof and the chimneys, which will mean we'll be able to reopen the ADA accessible ramp in the near term. We're starting to work on the A and E design for the front expansion. So that's what's approved in this year's budget. For FY13 and 14, the proposal is to do the second half of the critical health and safety that council saw last time, which is predominantly the HVAC system. To replace this HVAC system in this building and all of the windows for energy efficiency, what's proposed is we do the design in 13, construction in 14. This is designed for cost, planning cost numbers to allow for the potential geothermal and green approaches. This is mirrored with the rear expansion, where the A and E would happen in the same years, and the construction would happen in the same years. This is critical, because if we're going to build the rear expansion, let me get back for a minute. The cooling towers are here right now, and if we're going to do the HVAC system, need some new place to put them, and we don't want to lose parking space, the concept is it would go on the roof of the new expansion. We wouldn't want to redo the HVAC and then have to redo the work to put it on top of the roof. So the proposal is design and design, construct and construct concurrently for the HVAC and the expansion. Then what you would do is, we're designing the central front entrance, you would construct that in 13 concurrent with building the front parking campus structure, which would benefit libraries, community centers, special events, and city hall, because while you're excavating out front, you can do them both concurrently. The dollar amounts are slightly higher, because the HVAC system, when we got the cost estimates in from the third-party estimator that council requested beyond Mr. Hicks and my planning numbers of last year, came in 2 million higher in order to have the option for geothermal, and also when they assess the age of our boilers and the numerous heat pumps and the way things are configured in city hall right now. It's also higher for the parking structure, because it is a little higher even with offsetting the numbers, but we have a better bang for the buck. At the end of the day, staff's recommendation is we would gain space and usability of this building for 10 to 15 years, space-wise, enhance the HVAC system for the 20 to 30 years. Currently, as we look at the FY13 budget, and as we look at existing staff, we're six to seven office space short right now, without planning for 15 years out. So that's the city hall public safety expansion, and as I indicated, we have key staff here that can answer questions. To highlight the library's plan, this is the dollar amount in the design, as you saw last year. This is pictures of full stacks and technical services room. This is the diagrams that we're seeing earlier with the proposal to have 2 million in the CIP for the potential to take advantage of a first right of refusal of a building, land acquisition opportunity availed itself. So there could be an expansion ultimately of 8,000 square feet. This is only the 2 million for acquisition, but the concept would be to be able to move the staff admin areas and the lower-level technical and local history room to the new space, and then this space could be reprogrammed for new uses based on the space needs assessment, as well as the changing programs that the library director is seeing right now. And then ultimately, the goal would be that hopefully some parking could be approved if they acquired more land around the library. But with the parking design that I just showed you, an increasing 45 spaces, we'd actually have places for staff to park, where they don't right now, they're usually on the residential streets, and then citizens have to find parking where they can at peak times. For the schools, as I mentioned, we're going to talk about this more fully with the school board on the 12th work session, but to have everything in context, the CIP does include the second phase of TJ for the 4 million. It includes new funding in FY14 of 2 million for the Cherry Street utilization for preschool. And then Mount Daniel has 6 million, which is 2 million and 15 for design and engineering, and 4 million for construction. And this would be to address ADA and some classroom expansion at a high level. The school board, as the school board chair mentioned when the budget was presented, had a total of 94 million in their request. 80 million of that was for George Mason High School. That is not in this five-year planning horizon, but speaks to the need to really get a 20-year facility master plan in place, because that school will need to be addressed. I wanted to pause for a moment and acknowledge council's focus, as well as the planning commission, the environmental services council, on the question of sustainable facility policy. How are we building our facilities, and what would they be certified for? What would council's policies be? So council has directed staff to develop a policy, and I know Mr. Shields is working with Ms. Creel on that concept, so that we could be consistent with how we expect the community to develop, to be a role model, pursue what kind of third-party certification might be appropriate, what are the requirements? And then, of course, look at what are the cost implications related to that. Both the schools and the general government facilities that are before you in the CIP have a commitment to be built green, and certainly the intent is to improve our facilities, because they are not energy efficient, and we would use green and healthy materials. But they do not include money to do certification. We've had research on the school size, some preliminary on the general government side, and Ms. Berry has been doing some research, and we need to sort out whether facilities that are not brand-new or separate facilities actually could be certified, for example, with LEED. In my research, I don't believe city hall will be, because it's not 50% square foot expansion, it's only 15, and they're not separate standalone buildings. But that doesn't mean we don't want to build green or look for future projects. As in talking with Dr. Jones, TJ doesn't qualify, Cherry Street may or may not, Mount Daniel has a possibility because of the square footage piece, George Mason most likely will. So we will have opportunities going forward, and so we certainly would, if council adopted a policy, want to add that to future CIPs. I don't see anything in FY13 that's LEED certified, as an example, depending if that's what, third-party certification was chosen by council. But we would need to plan for dollar amounts. For the general government facilities, I'm hearing about a 15% increase to the cost, and what Dr. Jones is hearing based on their work with their consultants on a small-scale projects, economy of scale, they've been told to estimate 25% increase to the costs, just to give you some parameters. We do have some important, good stuff in the CIP for Rexon Park. Last year, if you recall, council put everything in park master plan with line items, with the direction for the library, the Rexon Park director and the advisory board to go back and revisit that and prioritize. So what you have before you is the advisory board's recommendation. They have retained the park master plan line item, have 600,000 in it in the odd years of the CIP. And then for planning purposes, transparency, and to highlight the parks, they have requested, and the planning commission concurred, for West End View and Howard E. Herman Stream Valley Parks to be standalone projects, and they would be in the even years 14 and 16. So every year, there would be activities going on in the parks. Mr. Schlitt is working right now with the FY12 money and the Rexon Park Advisory Board to determine how best to spend the 200,000, which wasn't available till the second half of year because of the debt financing. And depending on if they get 200,000 in FY13, they might want to combine it to have 400,000 and do a better bang for the buck, a big project, but they're still working through that, as they have plenty of needs.
City, is that?
13,000? I forgot the K. 813,000?
Thanks.
That's really cheap. Let's do that.
Yeah.
So is that 600,000 for 13, 15, and 17 each year, or is that a total?
Each for a total. 200,000 each.
How about on the 813K?
That's between both parks. One's 465, and the remaining is for West End Park.
Total?
Total.
Okay. Thank you.
Correct that posting. There is, I did want to highlight in the, joint with the schools is baseball, softball, lighting partnership of 100,000 to leverage a private public partnership. There is needs and requests for the George Mason High School synthetic turf to be replaced, because in two years, it'll hit its 10-year life for warranties, so the actual upper turf part, not all the foundation, needs to be replaced, and the field track needs resurfacing. With Gatsby counting changes, these are not CIP eligible, they need to be in the operating budget, but in current budget, they're not included. For transportation, council has seen these projects many times. We've actually reprogrammed, and some have reached their three-year life, so we need to reappropriate it, because we're ready to go now. So I'm not going to go through all the projects, but there is 92% of the almost $5 million of projects is grant funding. What the CIP does is ensures that we have all of the dollar match required, so these will be fully funded and can be executed, and they cover a wide range of pedestrian, ADA accessibility, signage, traffic signals, roadbeds, streetscape, and potentially the commercial corridor, but this CIP does not recommend the commercial transportation tax overlay. That would be at, in year 14, if we chose to pursue it, and I've been working with the chamber, they're aware of that, so we can They're aware of that, so we can continue to refine what that ideal project might be or projects, if council was to undertake that ordinance. For stormwater, we've had a lot of good discussions recently in terms of the watershed management plan, the recent budget discussions with Mr. Hicks on maintenance. So as Mr. Hicks put together these slides for me, he has put your stormwater investment in the city into four buckets, being consistent with our bucket approach of the Peds Plan. So you have the watershed management plan, some important equipment, so that we can be more efficient with the work, definite drainage, and sort of the maintenance and reinvestment of major infrastructure, and then a specific project that helps with the stormwater improvements. This is the $1.2 million that's in FY '13 for the CIP. For the watershed management plan, just over $618,000 is proposed to go for three projects. The first would be to fund the highest priority project, which is on city hall, which is to capture the water here and prevent it from going downstream and impacting the capacity of the pipes, which ties to the parking recommendation, that we don't want to take away green space and trees and make it worse for this project that's been assessed in the watershed management plan. This is part one, and Mr. Hicks is here to comment and answer any questions about the timing of part one to part two. This would get this part designed and implemented, so we can see what the impact is for part two. So when the engineering work is done for part two, it's done in the proper conditions, knowing what the impact, positive impact, is of this project. It also would fund the engineering works for the next two priority projects in the watershed plan. It would allow for funding for a camera, so that staff in-house can go assess all these pipes and finish out the work, where 46% of the pipes have actually been camered and data point gathered. It will allow for $381,000 for major pipe infrastructure repairs, where we know in the right-of-way that we're getting collapsed pipes. And it would do improvements at the property yard to catch and protect fuel from filling cars from running off and going into the stormwater, and also build a bioretention. These two are code compliance issues. And as council knows, you have just recently adopted a resolution to examine all the costs and potential revenue sources for FY '14 implementation. Right now, in the CIP, there's $1.2 million for stormwater. And FY '13, debt-funded, the rest of the STAG grants for the F, about a million dollars to do that data lagging project. And then going forward, a decision for how to fund the rest of the money proposed in the CIP, which does total $10 million over the five years. And with that, you know how to find me. And turn it over to council for questions and direction.
Council questions? Joanna?
I actually have three. And I wonder, you know, and some of them are large, so I'm happy to put them out. And if other people want to come in with something else, we can work this out. Maybe I'll do the easiest one first, perhaps. The three issues I wanted to talk about is the, as you probably are aware, I want to talk about LEED certification and putting dollars in FY '14 and beyond. I want to talk about the library infrastructure, and I'd like to talk about the city hall renovation. So perhaps the easiest one, and do I just direct this to you, or to Mary, or whatever the library is the first one that comes to mind? Help me understand a little bit more about that library $100,000 facilities study. Is this, this is coming out of general funds, this is not coming out of the library budget, right? And this is, is this in anticipation of your not, because the $2 million expansion depends on whether the fellow next door wants to sell. Right. And if he doesn't want to sell, does the library facilities study come up with a Plan B? Or, I just need to understand a little bit more about that.
I think I'll probably defer to Mary or Mr. Shields on the study.
Well, our understanding is that it's about approximately $100,000 set aside for a space study. Certainly, the majority of it would be with the emphasis on the building next door and the purchase of that. But I think that there would certainly have to be a component, that if that was not available, a general space study of how much space needs to be used for the library, the changing in the programs and things along that line that are occurring in libraries right now, and possibly even using existing space and including an enlargement on the site that we're currently in.
But do you anticipate, I guess I would want to be assured that, that as a result of this planning study, should the area next door not become available, there is an anticipation of a Plan B?
There would be.
Okay.
There would be.
Okay. So my, thank you. That was the question. Number one. My question number two is...
Can I just clarify one thing also? The $100,000 for the, for this study, we would propose that would come out of underspending in FY '12 budget. So that is actually not an FY '13 budget item. That's before the council. So that would be part of a discussion for an FY '12 reappropriation of funds that would come later in the fiscal year.
Would you, may I go on to the next one? Or would you, okay, because I don't want to... The issue of the city hall projects, 5A and 5B, we were all here when, during the stormwater discussions, when citizens were extremely concerned that those projects would become uncoupled. That the whole reason that that city hall project became, had a priority, was because Part A and Part B came together to create enough points and enough, you know, enough tick marks on the checklist, that it became a priority project. My only concern about the way this has been presented is that it could be viewed by citizens as that project is now becoming decoupled. And I would like to make sure that we are consistent in our message to our residents that that project remains A and B, and that there's no intention of uncoupling those projects.
Thank you very much, Ms. Berry. Absolutely, we intend to move forward with both projects. One of the tenets that we've had with the watershed management plan, and one of the things that has been challenged to us from this body, is to make sure that we do no harm downstream. And so what makes the most sense as we start is to control at the source, upstream, as much as we can. Good engineering practice asks that we do everything we can upstream before we go downstream and simply enlarge pipes. When we go downstream and enlarge pipes, that may resolve it for those next two parcels. It will cause problems downstream beyond that, if we're not taking it methodically as we move ahead. This is a five-year plan that we've got, and we feel like we should start here at the city hall campus and do everything we can to control what we've got here. And then the next year, we follow with Phase Two. And I think this is exactly how I have presented this all along.
So you're, you think that, that as it's presented, citizens should have a sense of comfort, that Part B is in fact in the pipeline and is as high a priority in the grand scheme of things as Part A?
Yes, absolutely.
And last but not least, city staff knows I'm already going to bring up the issue of LEED certification. I'm concerned about a couple of things. One is, there is language on those slides about third-party certification, which we all know doesn't necessarily mean LEED. LEED is one, third-party certification. There are others. And I just don't want anyone to be misled that, that by using the language "third-party certification," we are only exclusively talking about LEED. I think the city council's recommendation or direction to staff was to talk specifically about LEED certification, because it was assumed, and I could be wrong about this, but it was assumed that other third-party certifications, green certification, would naturally be sought as a matter, of course. But LEED certification is specific. So I want to make sure that language, that that language is captured in both the staff recommend, the staff language and in any of our discussions. That's number one. Number two, I would like to see those numbers. Wyatt and Cindy have shared with me some numbers for Mount Daniel, CDC, and a bit of city hall. And they were thoughtful, they were thoughtful, you know, estimates. I mean, I don't think this was just the back of the envelope. But I would like to see those numbers in the FY '14 and beyond budget, because I think it is absolutely critical that we get started now on this topic. I will, as I said, I am not terribly happy about ceding the argument about Thomas Jefferson, but I will, I will, I will back down slightly in that the city council had not made a specific recommendation that to staff, that this is, and to schools, that this is the way we move forward. I can argue, and I've, I hope that Dr. Jones and I have an, have an opportunity to talk about this, that we have a situation of dueling architects. One architect says one thing, another architect says another. I'm, I don't want to hold up the project. I'm moving forward. But I do so with great reluctance on the topic of Thomas Jefferson. I'd like to dig in a little bit more on city hall and see if there is an opportunity. Certainly, I would expect that there'd be green, there'd be efforts for green policy. But if there is, if there is an opportunity that we could proceed in FY '14 and beyond, or even if FY '13, that would be terrific. But again, I want to make sure that this language is robust, that we are serious about what we're doing, and we put the money behind the projects to make certain that this is the way we move forward as a city from here on out.
Thank you. Anything else from council members? Ira?
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy, for the granular presentation. The number of these issues, in all candor, I'm unfamiliar with. It'd be the level of detail on Park, I mean, I'm not an expert in that, so we have to take it on some degree of confidence in staff. What I would like to ask for, though, is a consolidated, or who is going to provide a consolidated CIP that has the schools, the city. Now, I assume these numbers are the nominal amounts for the debt funding. They do not include interest costs. I assume that these are just what the bond issue would be?
In the project costs that I put up there, that is true. In Tab 3 of the full CIP, we have the breakout for the debt service, for principal and interest, and how that plays out.
But is this then, in something that is then related directly to the city's P and L? Let us say it's operating budget, where we can see the projects, the debt service. I mean, exactly what is it going to cost over, not just, you can have it for five years, but these are longer-term operations, you're building up debts in year five that are going to first start repaying after that. You know, what is this going to mean to the city's profit and loss? What is it going to mean to other, what interest rate assumptions are being taken? So we have a more consolidated view of what all of these CIPs mean. The pay-as-you-go would be handled differently. But from this, it's very hard to see exactly how all the pieces fit together.
What I can do for you and council as a whole is work with Mr. LaConde and pull out Page 3-3 in the full CIP notebook, which does take all of the projects and builds it into the debt service, the existing and forecasts. And it's at a 7.5% for principal and interest, and does it for the full five years. And I know Mr. LaConde has put that number into his projections into his...
And a table right next to it, right, where you can follow from one to the other what this is going to mean. And I would like to have the school portion. You can put in parenthesis, but I would like that broken out, so we can see clearly in turn, not for, this is not an accounting issue. This is a presentational issue, so we can see exactly what funds are going where, what and how much, and in what years. Now, the other issue I have is governance issue. I know, if I'm not mistaken, John, maybe you can tell me if I'm wrong, but over $6 million, and it has to go to a city referendum? If the debt is over, if the debt issue is over $6 million, it has to go to a referendum?
As a general matter, on one project, that's correct.
Okay.
But I would need to, I would need, right, I would need to look at the specifics of this. I have not.
No, I'm not asking that you go into this, but it, because you can slice and dice this a lot of ways and avoid the $6 million. But it is a governance issue. How much slicing and dicing are we doing in making projects two years separated out, because we don't want to go, I mean, I'm not unsympathetic, referendums are tedious, but at some point, we are avoiding a responsibility that's supposed to be there for the citizens to actually see what an individual project is not broken up into two years or three years. What is the project going to cost? And how much money are we actually going to? This is more of a governance concern than it is with a numerical, the first point was numerical. This is, this is a governance question I have.
We can follow up with both of those items. The financial one with Ms. LaConde, and the legal governance one with Mr. Foster.
Thanks. Other council members?
Just...
Robyn, and then Dave.
Thanks. I know that you said that the Planning Commission, this is a joint document from the Planning Commission and staff. Is that accurate?
The planning, yes, the Planning Commission, what's before you was adopted by the Planning Commission, and the city manager recommended it, inconsistent formally.
And the task force.
And the task force as well. Okay. Because I'm going through, and I know this is probably an old document. Planning Commission proposed and revised on February 21, 2012. And I know that there's a number of things here that say not fully reviewed. So I don't know if I'm looking at an old document that's been updated, that we've overcome, or...
Yes, you're looking.
I just, this is, this was highly expensive. That's just, I looked at, I said, you've got to be kidding me. Is exactly what I...
Highly, what, I'm sorry?
Highly expensive.
With the piracy?
Yeah. So I'm like, really? Between the parks and recs, $600,000 every other year. And, oh, by the way, the schools, we need, you know, not only the CDC, but, oh, we're also going to be adding on to Mount Daniel two years later. I just, this is, some of these projects I expected. City Hall expansion, and we always have something in parks and recs. And then I knew about the CDC, but I didn't know that if we were renovating the CDC, oh, by the way, we are also going to be adding on another $6 million onto Mount Daniel. So we'll talk about that when we get to the schools on the 12th. I'm not calling, I'm not going to really ask any questions about that until then. But, you know, I'm curious, how many people have approved this at this point in regards to, have we really looked at, really? I mean, and here's an example, and maybe it's because I don't understand how field operations are. So we need to fix the football field with the turf, because the warranty is up. And I don't know, is that, is that a standard, like every time a warranty runs out, that then you have to fix it? Or can you go a little while with it not under warranty? And what's the consequences of that? I mean, that, that's, you know...
Two good, two good questions. And the third question for the schools, I know Dr. Jones and Ms. Carney will be glad to go in more detail on the Mount Daniel piece. On the first one for the document, you're reading the summary sheet from the big CIP notebook that went to the Planning Commission, and there were some updates and changes. So the best summary sheet to make sure you're looking at exactly what Planning Commission adopted is in the proposed budget book, which starts on Page 201. And the charts would then be on 208. So that is as the Planning Commission adopted it, and as Mr. Shields proposed it. For example, the, what went to the Planning Commission initially in the CIP notebook wouldn't have the library's $2 million, for example.
Would not.
Would not, because of Planning Commission.
But planning.
Yes. So the most accurate... So the most accurate one that I just presented on is in the proposed CIP. That also includes the financial projections that Mr. Kalin was speaking to, and so I'll use page 212 to make sure we're all on the same page for that.
Anything else, Rob?
And then for the turf, the turf is not budgeted in the CIP because it's accounting, and I may have misspoke, it wasn't just that the warranty is up, it has a 10-year lifespan, and so you need to replace it. But all the infrastructure underneath, the drainage and the gravel stays, it's basically the grass, the carpet, that needs to be replaced. And that was recommended both by Rexon Park and the schools for replacement, slightly different years, but they were looking at FY15 and 16, which would be the end of the 10-year piece.
Right. Ron, did you have anything?
No.
Dave?
Thanks. I'd like to see a couple of options on the City Hall work. One I would like to see would be that we do the parking in the back, and that in the front, we do the entrance and the slight expansion across the front, minus the rear expansion. So I'd like to see what that would price out to and how that particular project would be phased. Because I'm still not appreciating all this construction work in the front is going to end up with anything that's really better or more usable or more attractive than what we have today. It just seems like a lot of expenditure and a lot of concrete, and I'm just not sold. So I want to see, so the council can look at a couple of different options. The, the one where basically you do the front entrance with a little bit of additional work there in the front, you do not do the rear addition, and you do the back grid parking. I'd like to see how that would look and what the cost for that would be. Second one on the library, I know you'll get this question from people because law firms with libraries are pretty much eliminating them because everybody's online. So I love libraries, and my mother was a librarian, I love books, so I guess I'm an easy sell. But some people in the community may ask, why do you need more space when almost all data is now available online and it takes up much less space? So I'm sure you'll get that question from some folks. Finally, with regard to the fire department, maintenance, and vehicles, I want to make sure the volunteers are very much involved in providing their advice because they may have a different view about the county's capabilities in that area and the cost efficiency of that. So I just want to make sure we're being as cost efficient as possible. Those are the three areas of comments that I would make, and I have some questions in the future. I think Ira's asked a very good question. Okay, when you put it all together and try to finance it, what are we really talking about each year and over what period of time? And I would also support what Councilmember Barry said about the City Hall storm sewer improvements. It's important that folks not feel that they're somehow falling off the page, and I think you've answered that one. So, thanks very much.
Can I ask one question? Something Mr. Snyder brought up, is my understanding from the task force that a big reason behind the parking reconfiguration in the front came from the police standpoint on the safety as well as the stormwater, and I thought we might want to give the police a time to comment on that, about the need for that, because what that underground level serves and what it does for you.
Mr. Snyder, I'm not going to talk about the attract, the look so much as the intangible options that the underground parking does provide. Having worked in an environment where there is underground parking, it does provide a number of things that you would not necessarily look at first blush. Obviously, it adds protection for the vehicles and transportation, I mean, transferring some of the equipment in and out of personal vehicles versus patrol vehicles. As Cindy had mentioned, with weapons and other type of equipment that the police are coming in, it adds a extra VIP entrance for anybody, and particularly the judges, that are coming to and from City Hall, and any other high-profile individual that wants to come into the city, City Hall area covertly. It also offers that protection of covertness for any type of training or operations that you want to conduct in and around the building, when need be. It's a means of protection for the weather when there is, as you know, or probably each and every time, there is a special event here, there's a snowstorm, there's some type of high winds or severe weather, all of the police cruisers and all that equipment is moved from, away from City Hall into underground garage in the middle of the city. It provides for storage and safety for any types of resources, just by basically having extra walls in underground parking, which is very important when you get to what actual space we have here now. The space that we have here now, we house many of the dead animals that come in from the animal control that have to go down to the shelter, and that contaminated smell of those dead animals is pretty rank when it, it stays into the building usually over the weekend. Any large hazardous materials or property that we bring into the building for property, may it be drugs, and soil or hazardous property that goes into the property section, we smell, and it permeates that ground floor for a good period of time. And because there's no air movement downstairs, it stays pretty long down there. As far as yourselves, in terms of council, and for the judges coming in and out of this building, this is probably one of the few buildings that you do not have your own protected area to go in and out of. If there was an emergency inside council and/or the courtroom, that would be a means of escape and/or protection. As far as an underground parking, it would act as a means of sheltering place if there was any type of hurricane or tornado. We have had those here, and we have had all of the staff go into the basement of the police department. That adds an extra element of sheltering in place in case of emergency, not only for City Hall, but for instance, if something was to occur in and around City Hall and there were citizens, much like the farmer's market, that had to shelter in place, maybe a storm, high winds, or tornado, they could go into that area. So I think it offers a lot of intangible options that, at first blush, you're looking at it as a parking garage, but in all actualities for VIPs and people moving in and around this building, at opportune times, it would offer a lot more options. I think as far as the expansion for a police department, you know, the property section is, is very important to us in terms of chain of custody with evidence, but it's also very important as far as the hazardous material that comes into this building to be secured in a vented, in space where people don't have to breathe and see all the time. So, that's it.
Just to go back, I appreciate all those needs, and it seems to me that most of them are entirely legitimate, and this is the best way to meet them. So I'd be interested in more of a discussion on that. Thank you.
On the VIP sort of entrance, we're not just speaking about, I take it, judges, certainly, you know, I'm going to be going through public entrance, I don't see that for council members. I mean, we're always out in public. Does it, how does this affect the prisoner transport? Does that provide, I know that that's something that we discussed before, that there were some difficulties that the sheriff's department had as far as, I think it's called a Sally Court in dealing with that. Does, does your term VIP include safety issues as far as prisoner transport?
As far as prisoners, no. It could be victims, it could be the fact that, as far as judges, that is a real opportunity out here in the back. As far as, I was saying, council and/or somebody that needed to just seek, seek shelter in a place or space, it would be a nice covert, covert entrance for you, or anyone.
One of the things it does do is the Sally Port, as Major Gavins just said, wind changes sitting behind Mr. Kalin there. The rear expansion would cover that area to provide more security when they're taking prisoners from the vehicle into the Sally Port, and as a side benefit, we can correct the flooding into the police department's basement because we'll fix the foundation. But it would separate, prisoners would come into the back, that's where the jail cells are, we're not moving that. The judge could then come in from the front in a separate entrance. Right now, we have them both coming in from the rear.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm going to leave some of these issues to staff because I think you all are best able to address the needs, but sort of, my policy goal is, you know, we're still, and this is to Mr. Kalin's point about sort of constraints, when we look at all the projects, put it together with all the other operational needs that we have outside the CIP, put the CIP in, what does that look like? So we're not sort of taking this into a vacuum. My sense is we're still going to be constrained. So on the City Hall project, as I've said before, I want to get a sense of what are the critical needs, public safety, et cetera, or certainly some of them, versus the nice-to-haves. If we can get some guidance on that from, from the police department and our planning experts and engineering, I think that would, that would be, I would find that helpful as I'm making decisions. And, you know, I'm just trying to scope that out between the two variations of the parking that we saw, for example, having the deck underground versus surface parking. And also on, on the rear expansion, I'd like to better understand, and I'm happy to do this one-on-one, about what aspects of that are critical need and nice-to-haves. And again, this is looking at our overall needs and, you know, the, the planning effort financially that we've been trying to do and, you know, over the last five-year period, and what that's going to look like. I think we just need to look at that a little bit more carefully. And then on stormwater, I absolutely share Ms. Barry's point that she, she made. Certainly, Mr. Hicks, your, your point about the need for engineering, taking upstream first, you know, if we just look at moving water more quickly, we've seen what that results in, and it's not good for downstream. But I think that there is an expectation that even if we do the upstream, meaning City Hall campus, just because that's the top of the watershed, from what I understand, that there is a clear goal to help improve the downstream properties, and that that will get done as it's needed, based on whatever significant improvements hopefully we can make on upstream. And I think there may be an educational piece that's missing. I shared an email with both the city manager and assistant city manager that I think, Mr. Hicks, you received. So there is that public impression that, that there's a disconnect right now, that I don't necessarily think is accurate, but I think we need to do more educating and outreach, kind of explaining why the engineering is going to be done in that fashion. And that's not to neglect the downstream, that we're actually trying to help the downstream. So I, I think that's more of an outreach issue that, that we need to do. It, it may mean targeting a particular area of the city and, and, you know, picking up the phone, calling, utilizing email serves, just to get that information out. So I don't, I don't question the, the project, but just, I think we need to do a little bit more based on, based on feedback that we're getting from the public on that. Mr. Hicks, did you have anything?
I just wanted to assure you that outreach is, I think, one of the strengths that we brought to stormwater and our most all aspects of engineering as it affects our community. And this, we will treat in like manner, and we absolutely will reach out to the communities as we move each and every one of these projects forward.
No, appreciated. And I think just, I, I thought that it had sort of gone out, but, but based on the feedback that you saw, apparently there's still some missing pieces there that I think we need to just explain. So that, that's all I had. Anything else? Oh, Ira?
I appreciate the willingness to do the consolidated analysis, balance, whatever you want to call it, which we get to see in one page or two pages, how everything interacts. I'm not trying to blow the numbers up, so 7.5% interest rate is pretty high. You could buy commercial paper today, you know, for 4% for 10 years and 5% for another 10 years after that. So the numbers should be within some sort of market range. Also, when we, when will we have an opportunity to discuss how we issue the debt? You know, whether we have to go through the Virginia system or whether we can issue under our own name? That has a big impact on refinancing, because when we have to go through the Virginia system, once we commit, we cannot, we cannot prepay, we cannot redo the debt, we can't, we're absolutely tied. So when do we get a chance to discuss how we, how we fund, what type of debt do we use?
Richard or Wyatt?
Those would come at the time of bond resolution, but we'd, we'd run those through the finance committee in advance, so we'd have a chance to have that discussion and just talk about our overall strategy. The other strategic thing is how you structure your debt payments and level principal or level debt service, that discussion which we've had before, and we've been structuring at level principal in our recent issuances, which is coming out of the, the finance committee. And so that's, that more rapidly frees up debt capacity in the out years, which is a good thing. If I could just point to the council for your reference, on page 212 of your budget books, is a consolidated look. And I don't think we need to go through it in detail right now, but it shows the trajectory of debt service and fund balance restoration. It shows the implementation of our recently adopted financial policies, and it provides a projection on revenues and expenditures in it. And so we can spend more time on that at, at the time of the council's choosing. We can do it right now, if you like. On the key question of the affordability of the CIP, we take the philosophy and the principle in building our CIP, that what we want to take to the council is a feasible CIP. It's within your policy guidelines, but it's also, it's doable. And debt services is the big one. Fund balance, you know, we've spent a lot of attention on that in recent years, but in terms of the big stuff, the debt service is key. So if you look at the bottom of that chart on 212, where it charts out from FY11 actuals through FY17 of your, of your, of the CIP that's before you, it shows existing debt service, which has a downward trajectory as we pay off keynotes, and new debt service that implements the CIP, and then the total right below it, and then the ratio to overall expenditures right below that. We benefit from the fact that we have about $2 million of debt service coming off of our books in this five-year planning period. We have 2.5 million of debt in the CIP that would be new. So in terms of, of the discussion we've been having a lot recently about the restoration of fund balance, and the 1.1 that's in this budget, in addition to that is the, the 500K for PGO that's, that's, I forget what that figure is.
500 for FY14?
Yeah. The, that 1.1 that's, that's unencumbered and just going for fund balance, balance restoration, that can also be thought of as our future debt service, once we've complied with policy on capital reserves and things like that. And the genesis of that 1.1 is the big step down in debt service that we benefited from last year. And so we've kept that in the budget, and that's a big part of the feasibility equation for the CIP. So at the, at year 17, where we would be paying a total of 5.7 million for debt service based on our assumptions, and those could change, but those are a range of market range between 3.5 and 4.5% interest rates, which is higher than what we're experiencing right now, but who knows where it's going to go? Yes?
What we can have here is that one of the first, those expenditures are based on a balanced budget and are not based on current projections of FY14 through FY16.
Yeah. So this is, this is a discussion, this is a discuss, okay, but this is a discussion about debt service alone. And then we put in those revenues and expenditures so we can compare those to those, so we can see what a ratio would be. And those are very conservative projections here, which would tend to inflate those ratios, and so it's a conservative analysis. The other aspect of it, which is, is the presentation that Richard provided to you on Thursday several weeks ago, which is our, our multi-year projections. And that's where we try to drill down on what's happening on the expenditure side. We can, we know what our pension costs are going to be pretty well, based on our, our last actuarial study. Those could change. Right. The city does. So we, we have those tracked out, we have debt service tracked out, we have other known expenditures tracked out in Richard's charts. That's where we really try to consolidate it down as a decision support and, and planning document about the overall financial sustainability picture of the CIP.
I won't paint out this. I technically don't agree, but we don't, we don't have that discussion right now. I technically don't agree, but we don't have that discussion right now. But this, that's what I was talking about. We'll talk later.
Thanks, Eric. Just one other point that I wanted to make. I do want to get a sense from staff on Stormwater management if there's anything else in the CIP that we can be doing to accelerate and whether we have the capacity under policy and under affordability, not necessarily in that order, but affordability, I think, comes first, to do more on Stormwater management and also on parks, on the Parks and Rec side. So, and again, that's not to say we're going to make any decisions, but I want to know if there's any, any more we could be doing in those two areas specifically.
I won't speak to Parks and Recs, but in regards to Stormwater, the last big project that we've had on the books has been Kent Street. We finished that project. It was funded prior to even my arrival here with the city. So this and the STAG monies for the stream restoration projects are the first big influx of monies for Stormwater. Right now, it's going to take us a little while to get up to speed. What we've got in terms of engineering capacity, we are probably going to be pushing very hard with what is in this CIP. In regards to Stormwater, I just want to be clear. We've spent the evening talking about capital improvements to our Stormwater system, and these are important. And some of these capital improvements are improving the existing infrastructure. This Stormwater drainage, this $381,000 for repair, replacement, and reinvestment will work very much like maintenance. That money does not exist in the operating fund. But when you talk about Stormwater management in our city, it is, it is what we do on the operating side as well as just the capital side. I think this is a great step forward. I think that this is probably where we need to be, given where we have been.
Thank you. Never seen departments turn down money, but I appreciate the candor and knowing that that's your at capacity with what can be managed and satisfied. That's very good to know. It's great. Thank you for the work there.
Mr. Mayor, since I'm here, could I just make a comment?
Oh, absolutely. We're going to come to you next.
From the Planning Commission. Well, I'm representing all seven of us, you know? But the Planning Commission really fully believes that maintaining and improving our infrastructure is very important. And I also feel that it's very important for us to look ahead. I know that one thing with Mr. Snyder, when he was in a couple of the Facilities Task Force meeting, I know we had a like opinion as to the need to not, to do something and not have to redo it. And I think anytime you have something, for instance, the H-back going on top of a building rather than taking up valuable space is very important. And if any of you have done the tour of the City Hall, which I hope everybody has, the needs are really very important for both the staff and for the Police Department. And I know that there were a lot of questions from Planning Commission when the security item came up and the new parking garage. And I think that after Chief Gavern told us in detail, even more than what you heard tonight, the need is very, very great. And one particular thing is just the fact that you have to move all the, all the police vehicles and everything else down in George Mason Square. That's absolutely ridiculous, in my opinion. But I do think that we need to look ahead. We need to really be futuristic in anything that we do. We can't talk small and then say, oh, we're going to redo that. I've been through enough renovations of the schools over my long, long tenure that I know what happens when you start value engineering and having to go back and redo things over and over because it wasn't done correctly. And I would very much hope that we have all that in our concerns when we look at this project, because the Planning Commission at first had questions, and then they came around to full support of the Facilities Task Force and for the CIP as is going forward.
Great. Thank you, Lyndon. All right. Anything else? Right. Thank you. Let's move to the next item, which is the budget resolution for interdepartmental transfers. Counsel, is everybody okay? Okay. Making progress.
Stand up and put your hands above you. And do the. And say, "Happy Monday."
Thank you, Major.
Have fun.
Okay, next item on the agenda, FY 2012 budget resolution for interdepartmental transfers.
What you had before you, counsel, is a resolution to transfer funds from contingency and other non-departmental accounts to departmental budgets in the general fund. In plain English, we set aside money at the beginning of the fiscal year to address two contingencies that we knew about. One was Womata, where we set aside $400,000 because generally, in the first quarter of our fiscal year, there isn't enough money in the trust to pay the bill, and we usually end up writing a check. So we set aside $400,000 to address that. Also in contingency, if you recall, we set aside money in case we lost revenue as a result of a litigation over appraised value of one of the utilities. All right? As it turned out with the utility case, we prevailed, so we have $325,000 of that money available. And from the Womata, we only used 142,000 of the 400,000 that we had anticipated that we might use. So what we're trying to do is address some of the one-time needs that departments had. If you recall, I mentioned to counsel that in addition to the FY13 budget, we also had departments do supplemental requests for FY13 and 14. The total on FY13 was one, was, well, 5,000 short of $2 million. So what we're trying to do with this resolution is address some of the one-time issues. I'll be happy to answer any questions. It's all detailed here.
Thanks very much. Questions? Yes. Councilmember Gardner?
Thanks. I can appreciate the need for these things. I'm wondering, were these items brought up last year when we were doing budget negotiations? I mean, one-time, we say the one-time thing, we have lots of one-time things that are in budgets, that are budgeted for, set aside. Are these things that are emergency things that we didn't think we were going to get done, but fortunately we have this money that we're able to move around to pay for it, because it seems like it's a pretty substantial list? So I don't know if it was things that we had thought about that didn't budget for last time when the budget came through, or if these are things that popped up over the course of the past 10 months.
Okay. I believe it's a little bit of each. We put off doing stuff last year because of budget issues. I'll give an example. One of the issues here has to do with this building and the windows. All right? We also haven't done very much with cleaning the library. We also have legal fees. And again, there's multitude items. Information technology. You were apprised of what is in the proposed budget for 13 to address some of the IT issues. Some of this stuff has to be done before we do that. So that's why they're in there. Again, some of it was stuff that we just didn't do because we couldn't, for budgetary reasons. Other things as part of the 13 request, departments apprised us of the needs that they had, and we're trying to address them.
And just, my concern is, you know, whenever we talk about these contingency funds, and we talked about it when Falls Church Arts wanted some money too, and we gave them a little bit of contingency funds. You know, we used to, way back when, have much more contingency funds that then, at the end of the year, we kind of did this for, but we cut way back on our contingency funds. And what I don't want to have happen is that come next year, you know, we haven't budgeted for all this with the hope that maybe there'll be some contingency funds left at the end of the year that we can spend on it. So I just want to make sure, if there's issues like this, that we're capturing them early enough to say, we need to make sure we do it, and it's built into the budget. Because, you know, I think citizens want to know that for all of these various things, we budgeted for them as opposed to, thank goodness, we had some money in the contingency funds. So that's my only concern.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Webb?
Quick question. Are we at a point already of having to repair and replace some of the new cans for recital and siloists already, being that we've only had those maybe two years, a year or two years? Are we at that point already to have to expand?
Not that. I think these are older ones. These are not the ones that we bought when the.
These are street.
Yeah.
These are street cans. I don't know if you've seen some of our street cans, but they're, they get hit by cars and they, these are the cans that are on our streetscape or just our sidewalks. These are not our carts.
Thanks. Thank you. Mr. Kalen, do you have any questions?
Thank you. So which basically, the contingency no longer exists because the events have transpired that rendered it no longer a contingency?
Yes.
Second point is, can we assume that these are not fungible? If you don't spend it for the category that is actually listed, it would be a carryover to next year or go to the general fund temporarily or something like that?
Yes.
Okay. Also, Robin, to your point about contingencies, that's one of the toughest areas, because it's supposed to be something that may happen, but you don't know what. So if you have an idea that something could happen, it's no longer a contingency. So it's one that they've.
And I completely agree with you, which is why I asked if some of these, we didn't do, we knew we needed it last year, but we didn't do it. But now, since we have contingencies at the end of the year, we're saying, well, now that we have the money, let's spend on it. Where in actuality, if it was mentioned in last year's budget, we knew about it, then it would have been budgeted for. So. Now, I understand contingencies are emergency, this came up, or somebody needs this money, and we didn't know about it, and fortunately we have this money. But if these things were known about prior to us approving last year's budget, they would have been in the budget, and I don't know if we held off on them. Just see what I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what type of work it is.
I understand what you're saying, but also understand that there were huge cuts in the budget last year. All right? The money that was set aside in contingency were for two events that we thought might happen. The two events did not happen. All right? We had things that we were, that had been cut out of last year's budget, not because departments didn't know about them and they popped up. Okay? So we're trying to address them now. That's all it is.
Just needed the next one.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Webb?
Can someone talk to me a little bit more about the urban forestry line on here for the $20,000 and exactly what that'll, that's covering?
Urban forestry, they, this will be used to look at that program and try and lay out a, address its ordinance. We've got some problems with the ordinance. We continue a lot to deal with citizens who see trees come down that they wanted to stay up, and trees that they wanted to come, that wanted to stay up that have to come down because of private policy. We've been working with the Tree Commission to lay out that program in a much better way. This money will bring on board a consultant very familiar with multiple jurisdictions that will help us lay out a program that will better meet our needs.
And that price is the best potential negotiated price for doing that service? And I guess I'm looking at this, if we're for additional funding, to do some of the park maintenance type of issues that are out there within our city parks and looking for, see if there's a possibility of shifting some of that to some of those things, which I know that part of it, you don't have anything to do with, but kind of want to get a better.
We think that's very good value for that money. If you consider what was spent for, just say, the watershed management plan or even the PED plan, this is really a small fraction of the monies that were spent to plan for those programs. Urban forestry is a smaller amount than the PED plan that we talked about or the Stormwater, certainly, but we do feel like this is good value for that money.
Okay. Other questions?
I did have a couple. The Womata spending, I'd like to see more of a chart about where we've been and where we're going with regard to that budget item through the NVTC, I think, because I recall that some scary numbers about Womata funding were part of the reason why we eliminated the George system. And now it doesn't look like those numbers are so scary. So that predated you, but I do want to get a sense about that funding and where we're going, because I don't want to spend it this year just to be confronted with a similar issue next year. So I think we need to understand where that funding is going, based upon potential developments at the state and federal level. Then secondly, it seems to me that one approach here might be to hold these items and sort of reconsider them in view of this year's budget, because if we spend all this money now, it's gone, and we may see, as we work through the budget, we want to allocate money in other places. For example, I don't know, maybe employee salaries, maybe other areas. But spending a contingency now, when you're right in the middle of a budget, doesn't seem to me a holistic approach. These may be wonderful things, but when put in the context of the overall budget, we may have some different priorities that we want to arrive at. And I understand this is one-time money. I understand that, but it's real money, and I'm wondering whether we should spend it now or rather hold this in abeyance till we see where the budget comes out.
Other council members? Ira?
I understand what Councilman Snyder's saying, but I think these are fine. We have, we have the needs identified. No sense putting it off. If you need to get going on it, do it. That's my view.
Other council members? I'm sorry, I was late coming back up. All right. I know that there have been some discussion, at least as an option, for contingency to be used for salary.
Just, in terms of the FY13 budget, there will be a discussion of that. And I think that what we wanted to discuss with the council at the end of the meeting is just preparation for the Thursday markup session. We'll be sending out, first thing in the morning to council, a template for looking at the add-ins that the council has requested, a couple of.
Omissions?
Yeah. Omissions in the original budget document, which actually end up being net positive. The compensation issue, and then the list of all the new initiatives that are in the budget, so that those can be discussed in the context of making decisions. To Mr. Snyder's point, some of those council initiatives, which might be one-time, could be used with the same pot of money. And so in that context, you know, this list could be part of that markup as well, just in terms of trying to solve problems. So we could certainly at least have this in front of us when we're having that markup session as well.
I think that would make sense, especially given that we talked about contingency being utilized to address some of the.
Right.
Some of the compensation issues.
Right. But they are two different contingencies. What's in the 12 budget gets closed out at the end of the fiscal year. It's not an automatic rollover.
That's right. So salary, we would encourage the council to think about that, just in the context of the FY13 operating budget, and not use one-time money for that. And this is probably getting ahead of ourselves, but also there's been discussion of using the 1.1 million for capital for operating costs. We'll take council direction on it, but we think that we can accomplish what council's goals are within the operating budget for FY13. And that's the approach that we would take, certainly in the template that we'll send out to you.
And part of that was contingency in FY13.
That's right. Contingency is an operating line item in the FY13 budget.
Got it. So you have another contingency that was built in, so the question becomes, what are we with that?
Exactly.
Got it. Okay. I think I sort of get it now. Yeah. That's correct.
And I get that, too, with, so if we play that all out and we use next year's contingency for the, for salaries, then we don't have a contingency next year. So. But the second part is, we usually, we usually. We usually... And this is, you know, not necessarily the right way to do things, but usually, we wait to spend these contingency funds till after June 30th because I would hate to spend it now and then have some gosh darn emergency hit on May 28th, and hey, guess what? We don't have any more contingency because we just spent it all. So, I just, you know, we can do it however we want to do it, but I just want to, you know... You never know what's going to happen.
We have a contingency for that.
We don't know about that contingency.
No, ma'am. You do not.
Wait a minute, Richard. How much... How many contingency funds do you have built in here?
Well, all right. What I will be doing before the end of the fiscal year is presenting a plan based on our revenue and expenditure forecast. What I am doing tonight is I'm taking known money that we are not going to use and requesting council to reallocate it. Okay? Toward the end of the fiscal year, as close to June 30th as I can get, I will bring to council a plan. All right? And that will involve underspending, and it will involve revenue. So, there is a contingency in case something god-awful happens Memorial Day weekend or something. Yes, ma'am. You never know.
Got it. So, you have monies above this if this is all allocated out in FY12 even?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The contingency is still in there. Whatever you worry about, the possibility would be... Because what you take... I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ira. You just hit your button.
The thing was, Robin, I understand your point, but my understanding is that these are events that have occurred, that there can be no contingency. So, the... These expenses, if, you know, a meteor comes through and smashes through the roof of the city hall, that's a contingency that you'd have to cover somewhere else.
Exactly. That is not a pocket of money necessarily.
I hate to beat a dead horse here, but are all the things that are here, have these events already... Have we already purchased two new Sanders? Have we repurchased a new asphalt ruddler? We are anticipating that we need to do that. So, it's not like the money is... We've already committed the money, and now the contingency is going to pay for it.
No, ma'am. We are requesting this money to be moved so that it can be done.
Right.
Except for the one ADA item, we did have to go ahead and expend that. So, if this isn't approved, it'll have to come from somewhere else.
But as the saying goes, however nice these little artificial buckets are, the fact is, it's money, and we ought to consider all our expenditures. We're in the middle of a budget process. It doesn't seem to me wise to corral some money and spend it out of the context of the overall priorities that we're going to be setting in the budget. Now, some of these look pretty good, but I'm not sure how good they'll look when we work through the budget process. And we may, for example, want to commit that money for other purposes that become clear as we continue to work through the budget. Understand that it's set aside, but it is money that we can... We don't have to use it for this list of projects.
No, you do not.
So, it seems to me that, considering we're only talking about a matter of several weeks, it makes sense to look at all of this in the context of the budget.
Hopefully, we can do that Thursday night. Again, part of what we're doing here had to do with the $2 million of departmental requests. Some of it is being addressed with this resolution. Some of it is already in the 13 proposed budget. So, you do have options. You can say, "Do none of this." You can say, "Do this and do none of what's proposed in the 13." It's up to council. We're just presenting the needs that we are trying to address based on the departmental needs that were given to us. I don't know what council's plans are for items that we haven't budgeted for.
Anything else, council? All right. We are on to the budget ordinance amendments.
What you have before you is an ordinance to amend the budget of expenditures and revenues. This ordinance has to do with appropriating of capital improvement fund money, police seeds, assets, and barn proceeds and grants, and some use of fund balance. The major items are six... It adds 16 million... 16.2 million to the general fund. It adds 1.1 million to water and 3.2 to the capital project fund. It appropriates 283,000 to affordable housing. All right? And you have the schedule before you. And again, I'll be happy to address any questions you may have.
Council, any questions on this? Joanna?
I had a number of just small questions, and I'll just whip through them, and you can stop me if you want, if somebody else wants to come in. But on page... Line 33, 31 through 33, I just wanted to associate myself with Mr. Lofter Thun's vote on the CIP due to the lack of policy requirement for the general government and, I think there's a typo, and school projects to be built and certified under lead energy efficiency standards. I just wanted to associate myself with those remarks. On line 52, Cindy, we had had conversations about bulk purchasing of iPads also for city council. Is there any... Is this any way to...
In the general fund IT budget and council budget, we do not have funding currently for iPads. This was specific police grant funding with the targeted purpose, so it couldn't be used.
Okay. All right. Yeah. No, no, no. I had intended that council buy their own iPads, that it's not coming out of...
Now, this is seized assets.
This is seized assets. Okay.
Ride at a cheaper cost.
Yeah. Come in at a cheaper cost for the whole idea.
I think that's what Ms. Barry is talking about.
That's where I was going.
But if, you know, we could look into the purchasing of some of the other existing city contracts, we just have to see if personal purchases would be allowable. But now that we have the Wi-Fi...
Maybe you could do that.
You can do. iPads easier.
And I also didn't understand the sentence in Parks and Recs, line 98. Staff is requesting that these revenues be appropriated to expenditures to pay for the associated expenditures. Staff is requesting these revenues be appropriated to expenditures.
To pay for the cross two expenditures. That's a typo.
Okay.
So, it should be appropriated to pay for...
Pay for associated expenditures.
Okay. All right. I got...
Sorry, we missed it.
And then, line 179 and 180, the $100,000 utility relocation. This is allowing the city to underground poles, and it says, "On critical sidewalks and provide funds to leverage private developments, projects, or grants." So, my first question was, has the city identified these critical sidewalks or perhaps are they part of this pedestrian plan, number one? And if it is an and/or, then my question is, the leveraging private development projects or grants, is there a plan for doing that, and is that under somebody's aegis? Mr. Hicks?
This account will... When we have large projects that come in, the Flower Building was one of those where some of the utilities were undergrounded. There were some utilities that were left on poles. Those poles still exist. There was a... An opportunity for the city to leverage funds to underground that whole block. We were... We didn't have funds at our fingertips at that point to be able to do that. This account will allow us to do that. This money comes from a proffer that the city accepted. Another way that utilities could be undergrounded or otherwise relocated will come from the priorities outlined in the PED plan. And one of the... One of the key, you know, we divided that project up in what we call buckets, and the ADA compliance concerns are a lot about the obstacles that are in the road... These particular blocks, and some blocks have, you know, five, six poles in them. All of those shrink the width, and this would be one area. We haven't identified specifically where this money would go yet.
All right. Robin, any?
No.
Let's just go down the line real quick. Ron? Dave?
Yeah. In looking at this list of expenditures, most of them seem to be expenditures which fit within grant-eligible expenditure categories. Is that the vast majority?
Yes.
I'm interested in the ones that are purely discretionary as opposed to tied with grant funds. It looks like almost all of them are tied to grant funds. There is one question I had, though, because the monies here are pretty substantial and they involve transportation in many cases. Have we looked at these transportation expenditures in terms of their ability to support commercial development? In other words, for example, it seems to me we ought to be doing some work around the state theater, both to make it safer and to beautify it, but I'm not sure I see that here. So, I'm trying to figure... All of these look like they're fine. They're infrastructure. They're things we ought to be doing, but I'm wondering in terms of prioritization if we're really getting any commercial development out of this or support for some of our vigorous businesses, again, like the state theater, which is an area that could use some landscaping. Thanks.
For the grants, many of them are targeted, and so, these are often just re-appropriating because of three years elapsed. For the commercial piece, and some are for safety, the traffic signals and the PED crossing. Line 147 with the South Washington Street Transportation Improvements, that's the $2 million being re-appropriated. That'll be on South Washington, but it will have a commercial impact. The North Washington Street Plan will probably have the most impact for state theater, and that's in your FY13 to 17 CIP towards implementation there.
Lawrence? Ira?
Thanks. Basically, I mean, what we're discussing, have been discussed with special all due respect, is really, the issue here is the refinancing. That's what's driving these two numbers. That's like 90% or more of this is because you have debt... You know, debt goes up from $5 million debt service to 21, and then, not surprisingly, proceeds go up the next page from 1.5 to 17.5. So, this is really to account for the refunding of the debt.
Yes, sir.
Ira, anything else? Ira, anything else?
Cindy, I had a question regarding the South Washington Street expenditure. What project is that for? A series of projects?
That's the approved plan and federal transit authority's reprogramming of the $2 million grant from Congressman Marantz.
That was some safety lights and...
That's the Hillwood Transit Intermodal Spot, Traffic Signals, Crosswalks, and PED Cross do the South Washington.
Now I remember it. I just wanted to make sure it was the same one that we reprogrammed.
Yes. This is just getting the 417,000 aligned for the match because of the state money, and then because it's been there long enough, we have to reappropriate it per charter.
And thanks again for the quick work on finding that money to go in the right place before we lost it. When are we going to see shovels in the ground on that?
I think we're in design stage. Bill's been working more closely with Wendy, so I don't want to misspeak on timeline.
We are absolutely in... Deep in design right now. We're going to have a public meeting, I think, coming up in the next couple of months that'll bring these designs forward so we can get public input and move forward. The exact date for shovel-ready designs, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Can we just make sure that the landowners in that area are notified and the property owners and also the proprietors of the businesses that are right there because it may be disruptive to them, just so they're aware and involved in the process? And again, I think this is great, but they... We just need to make sure that they're aware of what's going on.
You'll be glad to know that we have had on-street meetings with each of those. We are moving forward.
Perfect. Thanks. Appreciate that. All right. And have they been supportive while I've got you?
Yes, very much. I think everybody we've talked to thinks this is going to be an excellent kind of boom for that area.
Great. Thank you. All right.
Just an extra detail on the taxicab place. There is some discussions about land swaps with them. They have some very funny property lines that we could get cleaned up in this project, and so, I wanted council to be aware of that, and we can provide more detail offline.
And I think to Dave's point, that having that information about what the businesses and property owners think of a project like this would be helpful as we maybe in the future look for other transportation improvements. And I know we're going to have discussions about that, about other things, not related to what we're talking about now. All right. Anything else, council?
Can I just note for council's attention on line 113, there is the donation of the Vipas grant of $10,000 for streetscape improvements on Broad Street. And this is breaking news, but Vipas does want to come to the city council to a meeting and present the council with a $10,000 check for this beautification effort. It's very positive. Mr. Hicks knows more details about it.
We, as you probably are well aware of, we've worked with the chamber, and we have rolled out our triannual tree pruning along West Broad Street. In the process of that, we are coming back behind this and replanting landscaping in our streetscape areas. The budget, we've moved monies around to allow for this, and the budget allows us to extend essentially two blocks. This check that will come in from Vipas will double that, maybe even add a third block. So, go from two to potentially five blocks, depending on the price of materials when we go buy it. So, this is really great news for our community as a whole, and thank you very much, Vipas.
That's great. I mean, and thanks to the generous support of Vipas to make that happen.
Yeah, this is one of the things we've been trying to do to support businesses along that area, so it's glad to see them moving. However, as Councilmember Webb also indicated, we might want to change their name back to Village Preservation and Improvement Society.
Instead of Virginia.
As opposed to Virginia. It's just a little typo there. Since they might particularly appreciate that.
They might take the check back. All right. All right. Thank you, guys. All right. That takes us to the rest of the agenda. We are on to councilmember schedules and comments, so councilmembers can take a look at the schedule.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I have is Thursday night, there's an NVTC meeting, and we have the Route 7 transportation project on the agenda for action. Is that right?
It is on the agenda for action. It's not a controversial item because all jurisdictions have agreed to do the match. If the state doesn't cover the match for the city, it'll be out of the trust fund, and DRPT is looking like the fund at least a portion of it. So, if you need to balance your priorities, I don't think it'd be a major issue if we didn't have City of Falls Church representatives at the NVTC.
Yeah. I sort of think somebody ought to be there, yeah.
We've done a lot of work with them, so...
That's the streetcar project, right?
It is the match for the $350,000 grant.
That's why we want to make sure we don't lose it. Thanks.
So, Dave, are you thinking you're going to be at that?
Yeah. I... They don't look... This may jinx it, but it doesn't look like a particularly lengthy agenda at NVTC.
What time do you think he'd be back?
Well, it starts at 8:00.
Okay. I'm just thinking that we also have the closed water litigation session. Council, what time do we want to start on Thursday? Do we want an earlier start, or are we okay with 7:30?
7:30.
7:30?
I have out-of-town visitors from Quebec in that day.
It's budget plus the closed session.
All right. But I mean, it's just general budget?
Is budget markup, is what the idea was to have a preliminary markup session for budget, and then the council meeting with schools on the 12th, and eventually, a final budget markup after the 12th, and then go from there.
Can we just start at 7:30?
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. 7:30. 7:30 closed session first, then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else on the calendar?
Calendar.
Yeah. Okay. Then, comments, Ira?
I can. Unfortunately, I will be away on a long-planned business trip on the 12th, so I will not be able to be here for that particular markup. And at this point, that's the only time I know I'm not going to be here.
Any other calendar issues? Okay. Ira, comment?
All right. All right, just going back very briefly to this issue of the use of the contingency. Base, just to comment on basic finance. If you have a one-time savings, you apply it to a one-time expense. If you apply a one-time savings to an ongoing expense, you're creating another issue for yourself. A one-time expense could be the construction of a hospital, but then you got to staff it every year. So you need to match, this is called basic asset liability management, you need to match your cash flows. You only have this savings once. Careful, don't, you don't use it that generates cash outflows forever at an decreasing rate.
Yep. All right.
Problem with a lot of grants. That's what happens with a lot of grants, that's why you got to be careful.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, council. If I can get a motion to adjourn, please? If I can get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, we adjourn. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff.